Alright, I think we're gonna go ahead and get started. I know there's not a lot of y'all here, but we'll allow people to trickle in. Thank y'all for coming, we appreciate it. Just a little housekeeping, we do have some council members here, and the mayor of course. It's not a formal council meeting, but they're just here to listen and they wanted to hear y'all's opinions on this. It's going to affect, you know, all citizens in the city of Lidl as they move forward with this process. So if anybody didn't get a PowerPoint presentation, they are on the back. The other thing is, we're gonna try to work through the slides, there's not a lot of slides as you can tell, so we'll move through them. And if y'all have any questions, if y'all just kinda wait till the end. And then, we have a podium over here, just so we can capture it on the actual mics. There's a mic there, and the camera's going for YouTube Live this evening as well. But again, we appreciate your time. I'm gonna start us off, and just kinda give y'all a brief breakdown of kinda what got us here. So obviously, we've been, as a council body and staff, have been looking at, you know, drainage, all across the city, and drainage concerns. One specific project, you'll see on there, Lake Shore Drainage Improvements, was something that, we actually had a study recently done, on the Lake Shore neighborhood, looking at potential projects that could be done within that area. But drainage is a concern across the board, in all the city. And so, as we move forward, evaluating what kinda tools we have to maintain our drainage systems, improve on what's already there, or make anything new as we're going forward. You know, we're seeing some growth, obviously, in Lidl, and as more people move in, more runoff, more concerns. So we wanna, you know, make sure we're keeping up with, you know, projects around the city and maintaining that. So, some of the things, this is just kinda identifying, some of the things that council has already kinda talked about. And, you know, they want to look at a potential master drainage plan study, not just focused on the one neighborhood in Lake Shore, but looking at other areas of town. And obviously, we need somebody to maintain this program, so we would be looking at eventually adding a new employee specifically for stormwater concerns and maintenance. And obviously, there comes some equipment that goes along with that. So, just, that's kind of a brief breakdown. We're obviously evaluating ways to move forward and how to pay for these, you know, drainage projects, construction projects in general are not cheap. And so, there's multiple ways we can, we can go about addressing this, and this is just one way that the city has started to look at, is this stormwater utility fee. And so, I will turn it over to Kim Lee Horn, and, so Kate with Kim Lee Horn, and Matthew Garrett with Nugent, sorry, Nugent. They've been kinda the lead on this project, and so they'll kinda walk through with some of the data, and kinda what a stormwater utility fund actually is, to give y'all a better idea of what we're looking at. So, Kate?
Thank you, Zach. So I'll start with just talking about what a stormwater utility is, before we go into weeds that are, that's going to be more city-specific needs, as Zach mentioned in the previous slide. So a stormwater utility is a user-based fee funding program, for the city to use those funds specifically for their drainage management and drainage infrastructure needs. This image here just shows about the spread by county of stormwater utilities in the state. The larger dots means, there's just more cities within that specific county that have a stormwater utility implemented, maybe up to the 40-50 range. And then, you know, the smaller dots is gonna be the 1 to 2. But there is over 100 stormwater utilities in the state of Texas. So regarding who will pay fees for the stormwater utility, it's really properties within the city limits that are not exempt. Mandatory exempt properties per state law include undeveloped properties, a subdivided lot until a certificate of occupancy is obtained, or a state property or institute of higher learning. Now, the basis of a stormwater utility rate structure, per state law, must be equitable, non-discriminatory, reasonable, and also, it must be tied to drainage. It can't be the value of a property, for example. It must be related to each property's portion of use of the city's stormwater utility. Now, the most common basis of billing in the state and the nation, is what's called impervious based. And an impervious, imperviousness is defined as a, a area that has been either covered or compacted, such that water is not readily absorbed. So the larger impervious area that a property will have, the larger amount of volume of runoff and flow that will be leaving that property. And so, this is just showing you an example here. That is a school, over to the right here. And, you know, when you take a look at this school, this property, compared to, for example, this smaller property here, of course, the school has much larger impervious area. Sorry about that. So what you see highlighted in red, is actually what was evaluated as this school example's impervious area. This is not in Lidl, this is just an example. So in terms of actual billing units, it's not necessarily a per square foot, it's, it's actually going to be what's called an equivalent residential unit. How do you determine what an equivalent residential unit is, is typically an average or median imperviousness of a single-family property in the city. Lidl's median impervious area is 3,200 square feet. And so, the larger amount of impervious area you have, the larger amount of ERUs you will have, and the larger monthly bill will be related to that. In terms of single-family properties, each single-family property will be assessed 1 And so, this is just showing an example of, say, a commercial property. So as mentioned, a median residential lot is 3,200 square feet of impervious area, so that's 1 ERU. Say this commercial property here was 100,000 square feet of impervious area, you essentially would take that 100,000, divide it by 3,200, and you would get 31.3 ERUs for that particular property. Now, I'm gonna transition over to Matthew here in a minute. I know Zach had already mentioned some identifying needs of the city regarding drainage. Matthew will go into more details as well. But just per state law, the cost of service that, that essentially the city could use the stormwater utility funds, are anything related to drainage in terms of inspections, operation and maintenance. I mentioned drainage infrastructure as for, drainage infrastructure in the initial slide, any repair, monitoring, even analysis of drainage issues and improvements. So I will bring it over to Matthew.
Thank you, Kate. Again, thank you for being here this evening. So, as Mr. Meadows mentioned, we've already identified with some insight from the council, but also from staff, the costs that we expect or need to address for drainage in the city of Lidl. Some of those are listed here, top to bottom, sort of prioritized, that Lake Shore CIP project. It's been on a couple agendas, I'm not sure if everyone here is familiar with it, but it is the banner big project that we need to fund in Lidl, per, I believe, Kim Lee Horn's assessment, also staff. And so that's a big-ticket item. That's a $1 million project, we're estimating that would be debt-funded over 20 years, so that'd be about $80,000 for the debt payments annually. That could come down, just depending on interest rates, but this is a safe, conservative assumption. You do have some existing drainage operations today, so even though you don't have this utility, the city is doing something about drainage, it's just not a lot. And as you'll see, that's $60,000 in the streets and drainage budget today, without the dedicated revenue stream. We do expect or anticipate the need for an employee, obviously a vehicle for that employee to get around, some equipment for them to operate, including a drop-deck tailor, trailer, the skid steer, a jetter, sort of in the out-years. So you'll see, we have these staged over time, because we don't think we can go in and get it all day one, right? Even if we were to start generating revenue today, we couldn't afford the whole menu in one year. And so you'll see that staged. Additionally, there was discussion of a master plan, that may be split over two years, but that drainage master plan is an assessment by an engineer, that is envisioned, it could come sooner, but right now we have it out in 2029. So, we have the fee potential. And so, as Kate alluded to, 1 ERU would be equivalent to any one of these three values at the top, for this chart to work. My next slide will show you what $3 accomplishes, but to fund much of what we need, the city of Lidl needs this $5 fee per ERU, that would cover the Lake Shore project and the current drainage, and that's it. Right now, a dollar yields about $26,000 in annual revenue, and so we just can't get a lot through a fee of less than $5. If we go for another $2, if the fee were $7 per home, or ERU, then we could add that solid waste, I'm sorry, that stormwater employee. We could not do the truck in the same year, unless we split fund it or leased it. And so you'll see below, in that green column, if we were lease or delay the purchase to year 2, then we could do that with the $7 drainage fee. Right? So we'd have some latitude in a future year, as some expenses roll off, as we have a little growth to accommodate more revenue. And then lastly, the $9 drainage fee, still may not fund everything we need all at once, specifically this engineering master plan, might need to be debt-funded, right? We wouldn't have an extra $300,000 laying around if we had $9. But we could envision that to be funded over time, at such a large project. So these are just some of the scenarios that are presented. None of these are finalized, of course, but just a sense of the actual unit cost in today dollars, fiscal '24, and the expectation of what revenues that this fee could produce for the city of Lidl. This is the cost of service, these are the added benefits that the city could see, in addition to the $60,000 that's currently in the budget. So here's how the ERU values throughout the city break down. And so after the impervious area analysis conducted by Kim Lee Horn, we identified the 3,200 square feet for the average residential, or actually the median, forgive me, residential property. So we have 806 of those, anticipated in fiscal '25. We have 1,437 ERUs in our non-residential properties, and that yields 2243. Again, you do that times 12, you find that number I mentioned earlier, our revenue potential per dollar, around $26,000-$27,000, depending on the growth that's accounted for here. So at $3, we yield $80,000 in year 1, $85,000 in year 2, etc. You'll see nominal growth, all in the residential class. And then down at the $9 value, you can yield about quarter million dollars, in the first year, ramping up to almost $300,000 by year 5. So those are some of the draft scenarios. I believe we have a few other notes from Mr. Meadows, did you wanna tackle these, sir?
Yeah, I can.
Excellent.
So, and it was briefly mentioned about the mandatory exempt properties, so the one thing on there is that, you know, the state law for exempt properties, but the city kinda has taken the stance that it's probably, because this is a utility, it would build just like our normal utility functions, water and sewer and that like. So, it would be only exempting, obviously, city-owned properties from that, because we don't bill ourselves for water and sewer. But everybody else would be receiving this on their bill, whether commercial, residential, school, church, anything like that. The, and then the first point, the cost services include a varied opinion on the level of fee, as kinda discussed. But obviously, this has all kinda been prioritized in discussions with council and amongst staff. And really, the point of having this town hall and these continued conversations, is really to get a sense, I think council doesn't wanna make a decision without hearing from the residents that, you know, they're comfortable with, say, $5, $7, or $9, and how they wanna move forward with this. Because at the end of the day, this is a fee that y'all will be paying, but it is going to have lasting benefits to the community and to all residents. And then, just finally, on here, just kind of, just briefly, next step, so we are required to have public hearings for the adoption of a stormwater utility fee that is required per the local government code. This presentation and this town hall is separate of that conversation and those public hearings, so that this is just that initial kind of step in outreach. We hope to obviously kinda finalize some stuff and present sometime in June, to council, kind of our recommendation from staff, as well as our consultants. And then obviously, if council moves forward with this, then we would be looking to adopt that in the FY 2025 annual budget, so this would start October 1 of this year. And that is all we have at this point. So obviously, we'll open it up to questions or concerns, and again, just so we can get it on the mic, if y'all could come up and to the podium, and either questions for myself or our consultants. So, yeah, and I'll make sure the mic.
We had a mic right here. It does echo. Hi, I'm Roy Garza. So I've listened, I've listened to you before talk about this, and I had a few questions, right? But before I go with you, I'm gonna go over here to Zach. So we have these new subdivisions that are coming in, that's generating more revenue for the city.
Yes, sir.
So we're looking at, and even though we call it a fee, not a tax, I see it as a tax, because we are paying an extra amount of money through our bills, right? So, what are we doing about that money that's coming in from those two big subdivisions of, pretty much, right?
So, so obviously, those subdivisions will be assessed property taxes, just like you are now. But as to, I think, an earlier slide, once those homes get their certificate of occupancy, once they're built out and they attain, those residents would be paying this fee just the same as well. And so, what goes in, we do collect fees, impact fees for water and sewer, but drainage is not a part of that, right? So that is completely separate funding source. And so, to I think Matthew's point, we do capture some costs for drainage, but it's very little at this point, so this is another way of trying to...
Maybe I didn't make myself more clear.
Sure.
So basically, the tax dollars that we're getting from those two subdivisions, aren't we already seeing an increase in our budget because of that, in the future? Obviously not right now, I think we've got 20 houses out there, 20, 30 houses. But in the future, we're gonna see that revenue grow for the city.
Sure.
So I, I'm trying to put this in my head, like, we're getting more revenue here, putting it into our budget, but we still wanna hit our residents with another fee. And if we look at it, when we go to the, to the commercial side of the house, right? So then we're looking at the size of each roof, the size of each impervious land around Looking, following Seguin's guidelines, I went over Seguin's site.
Yep.
And basically, we're looking for a 30,000 square foot property, we're looking at about $1,296 per year. So that means these businesses have to make that money up somehow. So, let's go with the hardware store. There's a lot of square footage, there's a lot of rooftops there, there's a lot of asphalt. So, they have to raise their prices, which means us, the community, has to pay that slightly higher price, maybe 2 or 3 cents, because if we go and start doing the math, the number of residents and the number of people committing purchase, we're kinda hitting, getting hit with a double lamp. So we're paying over here, with this new proposal, then we have to help pay through the businesses around Lidl. So I just, just don't get warm fuzzy with all this. I'm looking at all this, I notice it's kinda bouncing around some more of the faster-growing communities throughout Texas, right? Bernie, Seguin, Dallas.
Can I jump in real quick? So one thing that I will say is, because this is a utility fee and not a tax, just because it's $5, $7, $9 today, doesn't mean in 20 years, when we see those subdivisions and maybe more built out, and the money is flowing great, that, you know, we can tackle and move, you know, appropriately, and this fee goes away. It is a utility fee, so it, at any point, just like when council goes every year and looks at their utility rates, they're either gonna go up or down, right? They're gonna adjust accordingly. So the same would be the case here. I'm not saying that that's gonna happen, but that is an option, whereas those property taxes are constant, and those are gonna continue to go up as well, right?
Great. So that brings me to another point, glad you brought that up, I almost forgot about this. We saw our water rates increase, and basically what I read was, we had to basically get in with the times, because we were taxing ourselves or charging our fees based on the older rates, so we had to catch up with the world. What happened to that money? I saw my water rates go from about $30 to about $50 a month. So there's about $20 extra a month I'm pumping into the city, I'm sure everybody else is as well, there's more of us here, but what happened to that money?
So the water and sewer rates can, and the money received from that can only tackle our utility, water and sewer utilities, right? And, and fund other things within that. So this is, again, drainage is completely separate, stormwater's completely separate of that conversation, so.
Okay. Try to keep it down to this. So then, again, here are some more questions. I noticed, we had written on the board on one of the slides, earmarking about $50,000 for the storm fund employee. Looking at today's dollars, and what it takes to hire a good qualified person, that seems very low. To me, that seems very low, alright? To hire somebody at the $50,000 rate, I think we're gonna end up with somebody who's not truly, I mean, we have processes to weed out and try to get the best person, but $50,000 seems very low for a income, to be a part of this huge project. Could y'all explain why you all have lowballed employment?
So I can't speak to the 51, I can't tell you I did a compensation study, I can tell you that this is a field maintenance worker, is my understanding. I don't know if Lynette, the city's finance director, did any benchmarking to another similar position.
I'm not 100% sure.
Right. So, so this would be with burden or with benefits, right? This person would be making 36 or so a year, potentially. If that is representative of the market, for someone who can assist with the type of maintenance needs that you would have, along your major ditches, or whatever it is this person is expected to achieve, then this would suffice. So that's my understanding, but I don't know if that's true.
And I can tell you, it is comparable pricing to what our current, because this, the idea is that this would live under Public Works for now, right? And so, and there has been discussion of that, but this is comparable pricing to where our current, you know, maintenance and, and field kind of is, so, from a pricing standpoint, so.
It does, but it just scares me that we're gonna hire somebody who's a maintenance worker, and it should be somebody who's more knowledgeable of runoff, of how land is laid, how land is moving, so that we're having that proper drainage all the time, but somebody can actually get there on a, whatever that surveyor's tool that they use, kinda see the lay of the land, see how it's, how it's shaped.
And I would say, most of the time, especially in the size city we are, we're going to be using engineers, you know, for that, we're not surveyors. You know, we typically don't see that, I don't know if y'all have seen it in other cities like that, but, I mean, typically you're not, you're going to use those kind of high-level, especially like the master drainage plan. This employee would coordinate with whatever engineer we hire for that master drainage plan, but they're not going to be the ones, obviously, you know, out there taking topos, taking, you know, assessing that situation.
Expert in the water.
They're maintaining our drainage systems, they're out there to maintain what we put down and, and all that, yeah.
And then we use Lake Shore as our base for starting a better drainage project. What other areas out here in the city have been identified as bad drainage, besides the post?
Yeah, so I mean, there, there are times where we, I think we all know, when we see heavy water puddling and things like that, in certain areas of town. Lidl Somerset probably is a huge drainage issue. You know, this is just one, we had some residents come forward and identify, and council at the time, and this goes back a few months, obviously, even before I started, right? And I started in December, and this project was already kinda in the works. We had some residents come forward and said, hey, there's some concerns up here, and council decided to work with Kim Lee Horn, a different person out of Kim Lee Horn, but to kinda study and see what the issues were out there. And so we actually have that as, you know, built out, what they suggest going forward to alleviate some of the drainage concerns over there. So that's just one, but we, we have looked, and we have other areas of town that we, we know are low spots, that's part also why we would want to do a larger master plan, to really identify large-scale where our issues are. But I think if we asked any of y'all, you probably could identify four or five, you know, areas of town, probably, that have issues, that in your mind, you already know about, so, yeah.
So then another question, with all this. Hey, what is a jetter? See, a jetter, written on there, year 4 jetter.
Yeah. So, that would be used typically for culverts, for jetting out and getting the silt out of the ditches and the, and the culverts that we have throughout town, is typically where you'll, that would be used.
Conveyor washer.
Yeah, yeah. A very powerful power washer.
Okay, okay. And, let's see, I think I got it, oh yes, state grants, federal grants, have we approached any of those to cover Lake Shore? Coal mine, not really the post office.
Yeah, so the, so the city, the city did hire this past budget season, or for this budget, EMC Strategies, who does, we do work with to identify grant opportunities. We have expressed, you know, infrastructure, including drainage, is a concern of ours, whether that's water, sewer, drainage, streets. And so we actively work with them on identifying grant opportunities. I will say, at this point, there's nothing that has come up specifically related to drainage, but that is something that we work with on a daily basis. I, you know, I speak to them and we're working on identifying areas that we can tackle within the city for grant funding.
My thing is, just, are we pursuing every possibility before we start pushing a new rate onto, you know, to the, sorry.
Totally understand.
To our normal populace, right? So that's what I'm trying to find out, just even FEMA, you know, FEMA has all these weird little grants and programs and everything else. So I was hoping that maybe we had already started pursuing that, so we could alleviate these rates. And, I think that's about it, that's about all my questions I had about this. Hopefully I didn't take up too, too much time for everybody else.
Yes, sir. Anybody else, welcome to come up? Please, if you don't mind, just so we can get it on the video, the mic helps.
I'm just a renter here, I was just gonna fact me, is this just gonna be another fee on my utility bill every month?
Yeah, so the, basically because it is a utility fee or fund, it would go, let's say council decided to go for $5, right? Then, it'd be an additional $5 every month.
So it's just, it's not gonna be my landlord's gonna hit, get hit with something on their property?
If you're getting the utility bill, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, then you would be the one paying that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Could you explain that, the fees? So, when I add up all those, I get $750,000. The employee... The employee is the only cost that's going to be a yearly recurring cost. You should get 10 years out of a truck. And then if you go to the next slide where you have the fee structure, when I add the $3, yeah, the $3 one, add that over five years, that's $450,000 over five years. The $5 one is $740-some thousand. So like, $5 is meeting all the requirements.
Right. No, great question. I appreciate it. So, does the laser pointer work? It does. Okay. So wonderful question. So you're right that this employee is an annually recurring repeating cost, right? So we're not going to hire him for a year and say goodbye. So we maintain them. Also, this Lake Shore project, if we debt fund $1 million, we're going to maintain the debt payments for 20 years. Now, if you were to try to do more projects and stretch it to 30 years, it might be a little less, but you're going to be paying that locked in for 30 as opposed to 20. And so because we don't have enough money to go pay cash for this project, this is anticipated to be repeating for the 20-year span. So great question, and that's what carries forward. Additionally, as you add these up, top to bottom, with a little caveat about how, where we can do, the seven cannot do this, but it can do that, you'll see that some of these are one-time expenses. So we get the truck in year one, we can't get the trailer till year two, the skid steer comes in year three. And so we haven't, we haven't attempted to double, triple down on these expenses. We're trying to fund them as soon as the funds become available. Right? And so I think that's a wonderful question. So that's, that's my answer.
And if I can tag on, just like Matt said, with the, this is over 20 years, you know, those payments. But obviously, if we identify other projects, we may have to issue additional debt or wait till the fee is built up enough to take and cash fund those projects. And so that's why, you know, over time, it's going to take a while to obviously bring that down.
Add anything else?
Go right ahead.
Since I'm here, and I think, as Mr. Garza had some great questions as well, and I didn't get to field them all. One of them was about the new development, right? Those new developments come, and they come with their other, so I'm a recovering finance director for municipality. And so when they come, they have more demands on our system, on our roadways, on our public safety, the other things we're spending on today. So I don't know if the math holds that they can come and pay for all the new, but they would contribute to this as soon as they had their CO as suggested. So that's one point. The second, if we don't get this fully grant funded, and there aren't a lot 100% grants out there, free money, we may need to do a flood infrastructure fund where there's a matching component. Well, right now, the city does not have the ability to match. It has no money. So even if we were able to get $1 million for $200,000, we don't have the $200,000. So this is a funding mechanism, and it's part of the larger strategy. And I think it's great that you asked, is the city looking at? I think it's great you've hired EMC. I didn't know that. But I know that cities are always looking for a way to fund the needs for their community. And this gives you a little more latitude to match if those grants are out there. It's not the only solution, right? But it is one that's locked in as a utility, a standalone enterprise fund. So you can be assured your dollars for this are going to this. So those are my only two pieces I wanted to share. Unless there's any other questions.
Yes. Commenters wanted to pass on, just to say thanks. First and foremost, I do want to make sure people understand I'm not here to talk because it's not a meeting, but I just wanted to pass some, some information. And first of all, I just want to say thank you to all of you for showing up, bringing up some things for consideration, for presenting the information and answering the questions as best as possible. I do want to let you know, our city does need to take care of its drainage. There's multiple places that we need to work on, different neighborhoods that we need to work on. This has been known for years and years and years and years. And the only way that we can actually start is just like we talked about, is to be able to come up with something. And the first thing that we need to be able to do is to come up with that master plan. Just like Matt mentioned, it's very important for grants. It's for other, other things that are required for us to be able to get the assistance that we get out there, you've got to have the plan. If you don't have the plan, there's no way that we can actually get the assistance that we need. Right now, we're just going over, trying to get over the hill. And once we get there, there's going to be other opportunities that come along with that based on us being able to do the things that we do. I can tell you from our perspective, we are trying our best as possible to keep our fees as low as possible. I will challenge every one of you to look at all the surrounding communities around us and look at how much they charge for water rates, for sewer rates, for everything. And you'd be surprised of how well the city, the city council, the city staff has worked really hard to kind of keep those at a very reasonable rates. So reasonable that we've actually been told by some of our water rates that we actually should be charging more. And there's, the last two studies, that's what they've told us. So the council within itself is trying the best that we can to try to minimize it, but at the same time, try to keep the services. Because just like I was mentioning, Matt, it's so important that as a growth happens, that we have to provide the services that go along with that. And there's all these services that are part of municipality of a city to be able to provide. But this is just one of the ways that the council, the staff is looking at as an opportunity to be able to get us over that hill so we can start taking care of the things that we need to do and put ourselves in a position where we can actually do things better. I can't tell you from the council time to the mayor and all the council members how many times we've run into places that all we needed to do was maintain it. The maintenance that goes along with that, just to kind of ease it. This is one of the ways that we can actually have somebody that is designated to be able to do the job and be able to take care of it, and then for us to be able to have a plan so we can follow the plan and lay things out. But once again, I just want to say thank you for putting this together and being able to do this. It's very important that we take a look at this. But this, just like Zach said, there's other opportunities. If you're at home and you think of something else that you want to ask or you have a question, please contact Zach, our city administrator. He's there to be able to answer the questions and be able to kind of give you an idea and be able to present that when we have that. I wrote down every, every comment. Every comment that was made, I have it. So that's part of our discussion when we get together, when we get the council to be able to discuss that and do that. So once again, thank you so much. Appreciate you guys being here, and thank you for what you do for our community.
Well, if anybody, there's nobody else with any questions, we'll still be around. So if you, for a moment, you know, if y'all need or want a little more one-on-one conversation. But again, we appreciate your time this evening. And we, again, this is just the initial kind of town hall. There's going to be conversations with council upcoming in June and then going forward with the public hearing process through our budget and all that. So, but again, we appreciate it.